Regular city council meeting, February 4th to order. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zelka, second by council member Liljagren, to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. A special work session meeting of January 22nd, 2019, and the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2019, approve.
Motion to accept or to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Starly, second by council member Goscheck. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 100023 through 100078 totaling $2,511,460.87, approve. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to accept, to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by council member Starly, second by council member Liljagren. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Are we going to open up for discussion? I got a question on, no?
Council president. That's typically what we put in the work session for, but if you have a, if you have a question, I'll try to answer.
I'm just looking at somebody's on page 10 with general operating and the debt service payments.
Yes.
Can you kind of just give me a real quick summary on what that is?
Yep, so these, most of our debt payments are through a company called Northland Securities. So they've, they've purchased our debt service for our projects that we have. So these are almost entirely built of street projects and the equipment, like there's a equipment certification bond, there's one that I think funds the library. So these are improvement projects that we've put out as bonds, debt service payments over time. There's a payment due in February and a payment due in August every year. So we, in order to manage our money in our bank accounts and not, unfortunately, if we have bank balances or balance, cash balances that are too large, the bank wants to charge us more money for that. So we, we actually put, scheduled these payments a little bit earlier than we typically do. You probably have seen this on, if you looked historically, this would be on the next council packet. But because of managing them, managing the cash balance with the bank, we decided to pay them early. But this is something that we'd have, these two payments every year, February and August.
And these numbers with, associated with them on page, page 12, like 2005A Implement Bond Fund, is that the date, our years that these bonds were taken out, or?
Yep. So, yep, so they're, they're, the year that they were issued, so there's, you'll see like the 2015 B refunding. In that year, we refund, we combined some old debt service, probably had a higher interest rate, refinanced it into a, into a bigger package for a lower interest rate. That's why you see that, that, that bond looking, that bond payment being a lot larger than, than what otherwise, some of the other ones. But we, I can certainly go into more depth at a later time about what's each, what's made up of each component, but a lot of them over years have been refinanced and combined into, and consolidated into, into one, one payment to get some cost savings as well as shorten the term with this.
And how, how long are these bonds usually go? I see some back in 2005.
Yep, 15 years is, is probably going to be in this, in these types of bonds, the longest timeframe that we have. We do have, there are debt programs, like with the Public Facilities Authority, what we're looking at with the wastewater treatment plant, that go out 20 years. And the longest ones that I know of, and I don't believe we have any program, in this program, but the USDA has a rural development program and they will finance projects typically for in-the-ground infrastructure, up to 39 years.
Okay, that, I, I just wanted to clear that up.
Sure.
I had an idea that's what it was.
Yep, so that is, yeah, it's definitely surprising when you see our bill balance being 2.5 million in a, in a given council packet, but that's, that's going to happen twice a year.
If it happened all the time, that'd be 60 million a year.
We don't have that big of a budget.
But generally, in discussion, that should be done up in our work session then?
Yeah, we open that, that discussion.
For the bills, yep.
Yeah, when, when, when it was introduced as for discussion of the bills, that's, we give that for other, other information so that we'd have either time to research it, find the bill, or answer the question and, and not bogger yourself down in, in the regular meeting.
Well, I'm new, so I'm kind of learning step by step, you know?
That's why I'm very willing to answer, and it's good information to the public to, to understand that these aren't, it's not common that we have $2.5 million going out.
All right, thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Proclamation for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Mayor Zelka.
I had a request, which I've done this every year, I believe, that I've been mayor, and they probably did this before, so I will read the proclamation. Whereas females between the ages 16 and 24 are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple the national average. And whereas one in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at a greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas young people victimized by a dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors, and the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. And whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds. And whereas only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they do not know if it is one. And whereas by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas it is essential to raise community awareness and to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. And whereas the Establishment of Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. Whereas everyone has a right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. Now therefore, I, Gregory J. Zelka, Mayor of Little Falls, do hereby proclaim February 2019 Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. In Little Falls, and I urge all community members to work toward ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools, and engaging in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence.
Mr. President? Consent agenda. 2018 Annual File Report Receive. Application for Exempt Permit, DAM Festival Organization Incorporated, Raffle and Bingo, Approve. Emergency Contingent Plan, Water Supply, Approve. Emergency Operation Plans, Morrison County, Update and Approve. Heritage Preservation Commission's Certified Local Government Report, 2017-2018, Receive. Resignation of Ray Schulte and Appoint Council Member Conofla Planning Commission, Accept and Approve. Mayor's Appointments, Boards, Bureaus, Commissions, and Committees, Approve. Planning Commission Minutes, November and December 2018, Receive. Reviewed Financial Statements, 2018 Friends of Linden Hill, Friends of Pine Grove Zoo, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Senior Citizens Incorporated, Receive. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I motion we accept, approve, and receive the items from the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Conofla. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
It was just one thing, it's more of a curiosity for me is on your emergency operations plan, that's FEMA. Do you have to take like a refresher on that periodically, or?
You're looking at the one with Morrison County?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Mike Neiman is actually the emergency coordinator for Little Falls, and yes, he has to take classes for that.
He does, but like we, it was something like council had to take. Is it advisable that every, maybe five years, if you're on council for extended time, you should take like a refresher?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, it's called NIMS training, National Incident Management System. There are, I think, training modules of one class, you know, class level 100, all the way up to 800. 800 certainly isn't necessary, but taking, taking level 100 and having refreshers on that is, is important. It's, it's very useful to understand the system and kind of have that base, base level of knowledge.
So that's something we should pursue on our own, just like contact if we feel?
Yep, we can give you the, get you in contact with the, the training materials. It's all done online now.
There was so much in it, I'm sure I forgot a lot of it.
There, yeah, the, the training formats is actually pretty neat. It's, it presents the information more as a, kind of a class setting, online, and then at the end you take the test to, to see if you can progress through, and passing the test, you can progress through the, the training modules.
I just not, fairly recently went through it, and I took a lot of notes because I was, I wanted to make sure I got through it, and I don't think any of the questions had anything to do with my notes, but I still passed, so. But it is, it's really interesting because you can go back and review it, and once you, if I remember right, once you miss a question, you get another shot at it, and so.
Yeah, had an in-depth course because, because of something I did. I, I borrowed the book from Mike when I was still teaching, and when I retired, the book was at Holdingford, and it got tossed. So I felt it was my responsibility to make this big study guide for them again, so it was interesting. Took a while.
Yeah, I, I progressed through, I think, 700, and it take, it took a couple weeks to get through all of that.
Public hearings and lettings. Letting Camperably Veterans Trail, DeChantelle Excavating LLC, Greg?
Yeah, on January 23rd, we opened bids for our Camperably Veterans Trail project. That's the trail along Lindbergh Drive South going from Mill Park all the way down to Lindbergh State Park. We opened bids in the amount of $880,739.9. We are recommending this evening to award the base bid as well as the alternate to DeChantelle Excavating out of Brainerd. We did speak with the DNR, who is ultimately the, the owner of the, the trail, and they concurred with awarding that, that product so we can move forward.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by council member Goscheck, second by council member Starly. Discussion?
I would just appreciate the council, I'm in favor of this, of course, and it's been a long road to get to this point, so there's a lot of excitement about it. And we'd be starting the whole trail, which is good, and we'll see how it progresses from this point forward.
The average of the four bids was awfully close to your estimate.
It was, yes.
Good job.
This is the one that was a rebid, right?
This is the rebid, yes, yep.
How is it, how will this come into play with, with the Highway 27 project, the Anderson Custom Dryer project? Is this going to be running that same time period as any of that?
It'll be in that same time period, but they're in two different parts of the city. So Lindbergh Drive South will still have continuous traffic on it. We're going to be taking up the parking lane and shifting the traffic in through there, so it's managing that traffic, obviously. But we're not going to have any detour traffic from 27 going down Lindbergh Drive South. So the two really aren't going to, or the three, Roger, really aren't going to impact one another. The dryer project, that's going to be isolated, obviously, just to the parking lot, and then that's kind of timed offset with the, the Trunk Highway 27 project. So when they're working on the east end, that's when the dryer project will be gone going, when they're done with the dryer. They should be done with the east end as well, and then flipped over to the west side. So it's timing and coordination, but the, we don't envision these three impacting one another at all.
And it starts at Mill Park, correct?
Yes, yep, yep.
Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Old Business. Resolution 2019-08, Increased Recycling Rates, tabled from 1/22/19. John?
Yes, you heard earlier from Mr. Bergardt, he's the administrator for the recycling rates. He did mention to me that he will, he would be willing to add a, you know, modify the agreement to add a clause in there for a reduction of rates if he is compensated in future for, for recycling at Python. So if the, if, if there would be, if we'd wish to make an amendment, I'd probably take this off, bring back a new agreement at a later time.
Can, can we change that via the motion?
You could, yeah, you could motion to amend the agreement with a clause, stipulating a clause to modify price for a reduction based on compensation from wherever he's delivering the recyclable material.
Okay, that, that being said, then, I would make a motion that we approve the revised recycling rates with language stipulating that the contract is open to renegotiation based on the funds of the product, and also that we stipulate as part of the agreement, the requirement to have a monthly invoice from the receiver of the recycling. And furthermore, with the change in language, approve the city administrator to execute the agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Liljagren. Discussion?
Should we put a time limit on that motion also? Because otherwise, are we going to sit here and go over month by month and try to renegotiate every month? It's a new, you know, should we?
Well, the original agreement is, yeah, the, the rate would be fixed through 2021. So this, there would be no monthly negotiating unless factors changed into the, into the rate. So why, factors being, he's either receiving money for the materials, or he's being, being charged for materials, that he can't take it there without paying them to receive the, the recyclable materials. Those are the only two clauses, as I understand the amended motion.
So this could change in a month or two, if he decide, if he comes with something that says the price is going to be more?
I, based on my discussions in, in the negotiating, to get to the price that we have, there is, there is some flexibility, there's some room in there. That, I mean, and modifying the rate, so there's a little, I would say there's a little bit of cushion into what he's, he was being, he was being lost. And, and we're also, keep in mind, part of that, part of that rate was to compensate him back for the 10 months in 2018 that he was not receiving funds, so that this was spread out over the, that, from that point through the end of the contract, so.
A little back pay.
Yeah, a little back pay.
Well, and if there are changes, you'd have to bring them back to us for approval.
Yes, I wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't, anything regarding the rate based on the contract is, is still up to council approval. This is just to modify that, your amendment is to modify the agreement so that I don't have to then bring the agreement back again.
That, that was my intent.
Because he's, he's, he, his, his interest is satisfied. He will, he's willing to put something in there. I don't think this is going beyond his expectation. You're willing to, to do it, so I think we have a mutually, mutually agreeing parties that we just modify the agreement and have it signed and delivered.
Correct, that was my, my intent.
So I, unless something really dramatically changes and he's being charged thousands of dollars a month to, to drop off the goods, if it's, if it's, I mean, if it's really just a few hundred dollars, I think that's a, I, I would not be inclined to be bringing the rate back. It would be, it would take a dramatic change. Or have complete loss of that facility and has to haul it, and there isn't any other facility in, in close proximity to take it.
So then conceivably, if something like that happened, the rates could go up another one or two bucks or whatever, then, if he has to haul it someplace else?
It would, it would.
If something drastic happens?
It would be what, you know, what, what would that cost to him be, and what would, you know, compensation, what would the compensation be needed to make up that loss?
But we'd have to do that at that point anyway, because he could give notice that he's going to.
I, I still would, I still would not, our, our, our common expectation on utility rates is to leave them as long as we possibly can within the years that, the calendar year. We approve them typically in December for the first affected bill for the first month of, of the following year. So it goes into place in, end of January for the January consumptions. So we, you know, administratively, we don't want to be changing rates. It's just a, it's a hassle on our end, it's, it's confusing for residents, it's something that we, we typically don't do, so we try not to do it. Yes, granted, we did it for the garbage pickup component because it was necessary to implement that system, because the carts can be delivered at the end of the year or whatever, and we didn't get to an agreement until middle of the year. So that said, I, I wouldn't, I, even, this was brought to my attention last year, and I informed him, I, we don't want to be changing the rates every month, so is this something that you can, you can live with? And ultimately, we came to an agreement that back, return some compensation to him that he lost for the previous year, and he's satisfied, so.
Well, and we've given you the discretion whether or not.
It's in, within the contracts that I negotiate the rates.
I think we have a cover.
You, you need to approve them ultimately, but.
Resolution, roll call, please.
Conofla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Guarantee Rate to Recycling Amendment to Rates and Term, Tabled 1/22/19. John?
Yeah, so this is just the, they're, really, they are hand in hand. With the rate increase came the, came, comes the guarantee. So this, I think, this would probably be where that, that affect, the language that council member Hanson was incorporating, but we can, we can certainly add that to this as well.
And the, and this is, that 430 is going to be guaranteed for up till 2021, right?
Yes, with, with, the only way it changes is if he's being compensated for the materials or being charged for the materials.
Right, it's not a 90 cent increase every year, it's just a 90 cent.
Exactly, flat, one time, moving forward from.
Should take effect with the March billing?
That would, I think this would actually take, and that, yeah, we would need to amend the, the timing, because I think I have the July, January, and we're not back, back charging residents for that, so.
It says commence with the city's February 20th, 2019 billing cycle.
Yeah, going out the 20, due in March, the 5th of March, if that's not a weekend.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by council member Starly, seconded by council member Liljagren. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New Business. Call for Public Hearing, Resolution 2019-19, Vacate Alley, Block 2, Rhodes Edition.
I can speak to that. Lori, Lori couldn't be here tonight. So when we, we had the property that we sold to the, on the west side with the vacated street, there was a component there that we intended to sell them, also the vacated alley. When we went back through the, the property records, it was strangely an oversight that this section of alleys was not included in the list that was vacated. There was a long resolution with, with streets and alleys and avenues that were all vacated in this section of town, but because it, this, if you can imagine where it is, there's the railroad line, and there's a little tiny triangle of a property that was, that was in there, and that this alley was just an oversight and a miss in that, so.
We have a picture in our packet.
Yeah. It was missed when we, when we went through.
This isn't actually a resolution, we're just calling for a hearing, correct?
Yeah, we need to, in order to vacate the alley, we have to have a public hearing, so it needs a, we need to have a call for the public hearing so that we can post it and.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Can I put you to a second?
That's fine, that's good.
Motion by Mayor Zelka, second by council member Starly. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Well, this is a, it is a resolution.
It is not a resolution. Because it's a vacation, it has to be done by a resolution, we have to provide the resolution as a part of the public hearing notice. So I have to prepare it for it to go as a public hearing notice.
Thank you.
So it's exactly how it's called in the paper. So it's not a resolution for you at this time.
Not yet.
This is what the resolution will look like?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Memorandums of Understanding. American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Extended Leave, Additional Duties, Engineering, Water, and City Health Staff.
And council president, I'm going to request that we postpone items under, under B, number one, number two, and number four. And I can, we had some opinion from our city attorneys, they wanted to review these more and answer some questions about them, so. So one, two, and four would be postponed, we can.
So we just need a motion to table those three items?
Yes, postpone them to the next, hopefully in the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Motion by council member Goscheck, second by council member Conofla to table those three.
Don't we have to set a date on that, and then if it doesn't?
To the next council meeting.
To our next council meeting, he said. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
So item three.
Three we're okay with?
Yeah.
International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49, Snow Removal Differential Pay.
So you can see in there, remember, this would be page 70, 97 of 102, or 101 if you're in the electronic version. The, for snow removal, this was part of the negotiations to request a shift differential for, for that when we do have the, the removal process.
John, wasn't that, wasn't there something in their contract before that there wasn't a differential, so this, is a change from it?
There, there was not a differential in there. There was an assignment for the supervisor during the snow removal process, but not for pay.
Okay. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starlee, seconded by Councilmember Goscheck. Discussion?
Is it just a timeframe on here? I mean, the, the working hours while we're looking at that, I mean, how does that compare to the normal duties?
So, yeah, it's just for the timeframe for the, for the overnights when they, when they report in at 9:00 PM and work through 7:00 AM. We do typically coordinate this with the, with schedule changes so that to avoid overtime costs as best as we, as we can when we know about them. But this is a, a compensation for their, the time that they spend on an overnight.
And this is just for two employees, a skidlo, or a loader operator and a truck hauler?
Yes. Not, and not for the, the person that would be assigned to the street foreman position during that removal time.
Did anybody, did anybody check and see how this shift differential compares? I mean, I, I haven't worked an odd shift in 20 years, so I don't know. I mean, it was 35 cents back when I was doing it. I realized things have changed.
Uh, the, we do have another shift differential for law enforcement. They're at 85 cents, but that's for every shift that they have for the overnight officers.
Yeah. Shift differential, the last five years, there's some that'll be 50 cents. There's some that'll pay you $5 an hour for a shift differential.
When we calculate it out, it's really a, a pretty modest cost to, for that. I mean, 10 hours for two employees.
Depends on when it's snows.
Yeah.
That's 40 bucks.
It's kind of just a nice token to those employees that are doing that extra work.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Law enforcement and labor services, additional duties, patrol officer, investigator. John?
Yeah. So the, we had a discussion with the chief and Officer, Sergeant Ruby was, was part of this drafting this agreement or understanding. We've had a position that we've had assigned to the drug task force in the past. Where, based on needs of the department, it's, it was important for us to, to pull that officer back from that drug task force assignment and apply and create an investigator assignment for, for those officers. So with that, it's something that we, we do, it is intended that the position, that assignment would, would change over time so that we could get more officers doing that work and that we could, you know, receive, get that service back from the drug task force. We did have discussions with the drug task force about wanting to do this. We, you know, very, very clear intent from them that this isn't a, about, you know, the, the relationship that, that we have with that, with that group. We find it's very important. Just unfortunate at this time with the resources that we have available to the department, we really need that more towards, more internally than what we could give to, to providing into the drug task force. So, so for us, this was the, the better use of, of reassigning those resources because it can help build a, or put another body onto the backlog of investigations that we, that we do have. And, and give the captain who is, does the primary bulk of investigations, the opportunity to focus more intently on the, on the really larger scale cases and the, the lesser higher demand cases onto this, this position and assignment.
What's the wish of the council? Can we come motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, seconded by Councilmember Starlee. Discussion?
This has all been approved. They've already accepted this.
Yeah, this was negotiated or part of the negotiations in the contracts and they've agreed to it as well.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Petition, one hour parking, health source, Ben Grams. Receive.
We received a petition for some one hour parking stalls over on Fourth Street Northeast. Tonight, we are looking to receive the petition, but I'm also looking for a direction from the council as far as if there's any additional information you'd like before we bring back a recommendation to the council with the, with this petition.
Mr. President, Greg, I just have a couple of questions. Four seems like a lot and I know where the location is. And I was thinking at first, could we go along the avenue? But then if the road would go through there?
Right.
Then we'd have to rescind that. But, and there's not a lot of business along there. But, you know, I look at when they ask for that, at Falls Court.
Yep.
And, you know, we pulled our teeth to get one spot and I think it was a temporary sign at first.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering, are, you know, if another chiropractor down on First Street or Broadway would ask for, for parking spaces, obviously we're not going to give it. Do we, do we lean more towards fairness or do we lean more towards because there's not a lot of parking there?
Right. I mean, in the past, what we've done for like Falls Court, we've sent out letters to the neighboring business owners just to see what their takeout would be on it for the, for the rec, or the requested time limit. I would suspect we're probably going to do that as well and see what kind of feedback we get and, and go from there. I, I don't have a, an opinion one way or another on it. It's, it's kind of what, what do we see in the area as far as the need?
How many spots do you know are on that block? They asking for half of them, I would guess.
Uh, it's probably, on, on one side, I would say you're probably half of them, yes. Yep.
But, but think it'd be every available spot in front of that building.
I would suspect you're right. Yep.
I imagine there's not a significant cost to the, this request.
For us, no. I mean, it's the cost of the signs. It's a matter of how do you, I mean, they're looking for one hour parking, parking spots for a reason. I mean, they, they, they don't like it when the neighboring rentals, units park there all day long, but their customers can't get into their business. And so that's kind of the, the reason for it from what I suspect. And so the fairness in terms of how do you, how do you have a, a public right-of-way area open for everybody that's, that's able to use it? That's the challenge.
What's the wish of the council?
Well, I'll make a motion to receive. I mean, we can talk about this more when it comes up.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Starlee. Discussion?
Would we like to send letters?
Please.
Okay.
Is he the only business in that building right now since the yoga place moved?
I believe in that business. In that, in that building, yes.
Campagirby is right in front, right beside.
Right. Just next to the next one to the south.
And then what's on the, and isn't there another?
There's another one there. I don't know what it's called though. Earl owns it. I don't know what it is though.
And then on the street side or the avenue side, there's just a park across the road from there.
Mm-hmm.
So the only real issue is on the, on the street across the other side of the road where there's some, like apartments or something.
Correct.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2019-11, International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49 Labor Agreement. John?
Again, similar, the, the same major terms for health insurance and, and wages for the 49ers group. They came to an agreement with the same two and a half for 19, 3% for, for 2020. And then the fixed increases, fixed rate increases for their health insurance premiums. Some modest changes, one including that, I think I touched on it in the, in discussion about the shift differential, that they would, the assignment for street foremen for those overnights. There was some clarification to make sure that they had to have two on there. Really, this one was, was pretty, pretty straightforward. There were some other talks about, within their group about wanting to do some, some other, looking at the post-retirement healthcare savings plan that kind of extended their negotiation period a little bit. But this one, this one went really smoothly.
What's the length of this contract?
Two years.
What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, seconded by Councilmember Starlee. Discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Perkak?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-12, Minnesota Department of Transportation Detour Agreement, Trunk Highway 27 Project. Greg?
Yeah. So this evening, we've got the agreement with MinDOT for the Trunk Highway 27 project to use basically some of our local roads for, for the detour route. They are looking at paying us $11,792.87 for the use of those roads through the, the duration of the project.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starlee, seconded by Councilmember Liljagren. Discussion?
Well, Mr. President, I don't have a, an issue with their math. It looks like in reading it, this is pretty common.
It is.
The only question I do have is, we just put a lot of money in one of those streets last year.
Yep.
If this detour totally tears that up, do we have any recourse?
Not a lot. I mean, it's based off of the traffic volumes that they project through, through those streets. I would suspect that the bulk of the traffic that they're projecting is, is going to be the local traffic through there. So it's not going to be the heavier traffic that we typically see coming through 27. The truck route, as they have it posted, is up around, I would attend and back around. So I don't see it being an issue. If it does get pounded out and we start seeing issues, then I'll have that discussion with MinDOT. But I, I don't see it being, seeing a problem.
Where does the money we get from them go?
I believe it's just in the general fund. Yeah, it would come in as a, as a revenue. It would go in the general fund.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Perkak?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-04, Year End Transfers. John?
Yes. So Lori compiled for, for you the year end transfer list. This pretty extensive. A lot of it's mandatory for, or put in, within our budget. I think we had discussion last time where the intent for, for moving some of the excess dollars that we had in the general fund. So those are, are put in here as well. So.
Motion to adopt.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starlee, seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Resolution, roll call, please.
Perkak?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-13, Call for Public Hearing, Expand Tax Increment Financing District, ABS. John?
So ABS Supply is a, a business that, that is in our chief hole in the day industrial park. They started just last year and they came to our EDA meeting last week. They have a business opportunity to expand and take on some new, new customer, new clientele and a new process. And this would be to, they have two components to their facility right now. They have a 10,000 square foot storage area. This would be to duplicate that same storage capacity and extend it onto their, onto their property or onto adjoining property that the EDA is, I think is approved recommending sale of, to them. So they had first right of refusal on that land. Adds another parcel to the, up in that development. So I think for, for this, it's a, it's a really good opportunity for us. But with that, they're, they're looking to expand their TIF district onto the additional parcel so that they can recruit some of the cost for that, that project. So this is for, TIF district says, you know, or don't know, for, can be used for anything on the ground or in the ground. So land acquisition or infrastructure are primarily the two main, main purposes for that, for that district. So the revenue that they're going to generate on that property gets captured for a certain period of time, reinvested back into the property. So right now that land is, is city owned, so it's generating no taxes because it's exempt. So this won't be a tax cost impact to residents. We're not taking anything off the tax rolls. We're just delaying it from entering the tax rolls for a period of time.
What's the wish of the council?
Sell moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, seconded by Councilmember Canofla. Discussion?
It's not a combined TIF district. It starts new.
The, it, no, this is an expansion of their existing TIF district. We have an existing TIF district on what was two parcels that they, they purchased from the city to develop their, their property. This, the third parcel that they're looking to acquire is still city owned. It's would expand their TIF district into adding that.
So the requirements are based off the old TIF district?
Yes.
Mr. President, also I believe this is a business that we got out of Sauk Rapids.
So, yeah.
Yeah, Sauk Rapids.
Pulling towards Sauk Rapids.
So, once again, it proves, and these gentlemen had said that Little Falls was by far the best they had because they were looking for other places to go. They said we were by, by far the best to work with. And so we got not only a sale, but a second sale. And they've been adding employees and they're a great community asset.
Added 10, 10 jobs currently would, would be expanding a few more with, with this project.
And they already own this land or this?
They had the, with the purchase agreement that we, we sold them the, the two lots that we did sell them, we also gave them a right of first refusal on this third lot. So we, we retained ownership, but if anybody else came to buy it, they could, they could have interrupted that to, to buy it instead. So they've now executed their right to buy the property.
So they're going to be purchasing that property?
Roll call, please.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Perkak?
Yes.
Resolutions for Acquisition of Properties, Isma Right-of-Way, 138th Street. Greg?
So as I've talked to the council in the past in regards to 138th Street, if you go past Deionado, go over the Fourth Street, overpass, and then you keep going to the, to the east of the county. It's a joint project between the county, the city and the township. We're looking at extending that road all the way through over to what I call airport, John Deere Road. The city's portion of it is to acquire right of way in the stretch from where the blacktop ends to where the, the road curves and makes a hard right to go to the south. The township has already acquired the right of way farther to the east. They've given that over to the county. Now it's the city's portion to, to acquire the right of way along that stretch. We've met with about 80% of the property owners and have agreements in place to acquire that, excuse me, that right of way. But tonight, basically what we're looking to do is normally in our process, we purchase property by resolution. And so we wouldn't actually be acquiring it. We're just approving that we pay for it and give it directly to, to the county, which is consistent with our memorandum of understanding that we agreed with them. So tonight, we are looking at approving the, the one, the five resolutions that we've got in front of you. They are at the amounts that we discussed at our closed session in regards to the property acquisition. And so there's no, no surprises on, on those dollar amounts for us.
First one, Resolution 2019-14, Erdrick Family Revocable Trust, 1.24 acres adopt. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Goscheck, seconded by Mayor Zilka. Discussion?
With the land acquisition, are, are we done or are we going to be involved in part of the project?
We will not be involved with the construction costs of the product. So once we buy the land, we give it to the county and then the county takes it from there and it becomes a county road.
Okay. Thank you.
Resolution, roll call, please.
Hanson?
No.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Perkak?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-15, Patrick G. and Sheila A. Henry, 0.07 acres adopt. What's the wish of the council?
Sell moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, seconded by Councilmember Liljagren. Discussion?
Well, they're all the same. So let me just clarify that I'm not. I'm not, this is the only thing I can vote no on. I'm not in favor of the project, but once the land is purchased, it's a done deal and we have no say. I, I just don't want to see all this traffic on a mini superhighway dumping in my neighborhood, which is what is going to happen.
Resolution, roll call please.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Conofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Resolution 2019-16, Brandon T. LaBlah, 0.33 acres adopt. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goscheck, second, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Discussion? Roll call please.
Conofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-17, Paul D. and Amy McKinley, 0.05 acres adopt. What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Conofla. Discussion? Roll call please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Conofla?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-18, Beverly Joyce Nuas Revocable Trust, 0.76 acres adopt. What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Starley. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Conofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
City Council Reports on City Authorities, Boards, Bureaus, Commissions, and Committees. Anyone?
We'll be having a Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail meeting in Randall at the Fire Hall, six o'clock next Thursday, or Tuesday, it'll be the following Thursday after this week.
Call to President, I was fortunate to attend the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day last Wednesday despite the minus 35 degrees starting down. There, they did, we did have it, was able to make it down, met with all of our, our legislators as well as a couple additional ones, mostly discussing our wastewater project. There is a lot of motivation at the, at the legislative level to, to find a legislative solution to, to the lawsuit that was filed, the injunction that was filed on our Point Source Implementation Grant. So it's, it's, the, the word is, we, we did have a meeting with the, the Speaker of the House, there's been legislation in the House that's been introduced that would just transfer those from the Environmental Trust Fund over to GO bonds, which is what they typically would be. So that's, that's really good, that's progressing well through the House. There's another hearing, I believe tomorrow. There was a hearing last week, so there's, it's, it's making its rounds through there. The bigger challenge would be within the, the Senate because of the, the close nature of, of the Republicans versus the Democrats. It has got a lot of support on the Democratic House side, where there's some, there's some interest on the, on the Senate side from potentially both Republicans and Democrats to want to see the, that question brought up go all the way to the courts to get an